Notice of this meeting stated date, place, and time has been disseminated as required under the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975. Copies of the agenda are also posted on the city website in Linden TV for the public. This meeting is now called to order. Mr. Clerk, can you please conduct your prayer and flag salute?
God of the universe, look thou with favor upon these here assembled, and bestow thy guidance upon the members of the governing body in their deliberations. This we ask in thy name, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, to God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
In the event of an emergency, the proper method of exiting the council chambers is through the three doors in the rear of the room. Occupants should proceed down the staircase, out the front door, and move away from the area of the front steps. Any member of the public wishing to speak during the public comment session at the end of the meeting, please sign in on the white sheets provided in the front of the room with your name and address. Please turn off all cell phones or place them on vibrate. If you need to take a call, please leave the council chambers to do so. Mr. Clerk, can you please call the roll?
Mrs. Ormond.
Present.
Javick.
Present.
Caldwell.
Here.
Mohammed.
Excused.
Rivas.
Present.
Delgado.
Here.
Strano.
Here.
Armstead.
Here.
Rodriguez.
Here.
Hudak.
Here.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Here. Can we have approval of the public session minutes of September 16, 2025, please?
Council President, I'd like to make a motion to approve the public meeting minutes of the September 2025 meeting, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Ormond.
Yes.
Javick.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Rivas. Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakitis.
Yes. Okay, this evening, we have several presentations. We're going to begin with the presentation for Ormond Fearetti for his 25 years of volunteer service to the City of Linden. I'm going to ask Mayor Armstead and Councilman Strano to join me down on the floor.
Well, good evening, everyone. You know, 30 years ago, over 30 years ago when I started, I remember somebody making a comment, Derek's the only one that doesn't wear glasses. It's been that long, so now I need glasses, and I'm looking at this small print, there's no way I'm going to get through this resolution without glasses. But anyway, speaking of 30 years ago, I met Ormond shortly thereafter, when I first started as a, when I first got into this business. And I just have to say, before I read any resolution, how instrumental he was to me, both him and Mr. Laplaca, because I knew nothing about planning. I, you know, I knew nothing about subdivisions, egress, any of that, all that good stuff. I knew nothing about it, but Ormond was very instrumental in helping me get my footing in that particular area of expertise. And of course, I'll never have as much expertise as he has, although I'll try, but...
You don't need my kind of...
But it's been a tremendous experience working with him. He's a, what I would refer to, a veritable cornucopia of knowledge. He knows his business. And again, it was just a joy being up there with him on the planning board, both him and Joe Laplaca, and just learning, just learning. They were the greatest teachers that you could ever want to have as a rookie coming onto a planning board. So first of all, so without any further ado, I want to thank you. You deserve a big thank you for that, okay? So we have a resolution. I'm going to read that.
Oh, it's a long one.
It's a long one, and that's why I needed my glasses. The resolution reads, it's thanking Ormond Fearetti for his years of volunteer service to the City of Linden, whereas on August 11, 2025, Ormond A. Fearetti submitted his resignation as a member of the planning board of the City of Linden, and in 25 years of dedicated service to the City of Linden, which began with his first appointment on June 20, 2000. Whereas after graduating high school, Ormond began to work in 1945 for Grassman and Correct and Company, later becoming Grassman, Correct, and Mixer, as a survey party, rod man, and knew that his chosen profession would be engineering and land survey. And where after proudly serving his country in the Far East as a member of the United States Army of Occupation in Japan, he enrolled in Newark College of Engineering, where he attended evening classes while working during the day, resulting in receiving both a Bachelor of Science and Master's Degree in Civil Engineering. And whereas continuing his career at Grassman, he rose through the ranks to become Chief Operating Engineer, where he remained until 1976, when he became a municipal engineer for the Township of Union. A role he would perform in the Township of Hillside and Borough of Madison. And whereas Ormond joined the County of Union in 1978 as county engineer and continued to serve there, becoming head of the Division of Engineering and Planning, where he oversaw services related to engineering, planning, buildings, public works, parks, and recreation. And whereas, besides his professional career, Ormond has also dedicated himself to the betterment of his chosen profession, serving in such prestigious positions as President of the NJ Society of Professional Engineers, the New Jersey Society of Municipal Engineers, and New Jersey State Association of County Engineers. And whereas, Ormond's professionalism and dedication has earned him the recognition of his colleagues, honoring him as Engineer of the Year by the Society of Professional Engineers, and life membership in the National Society of Professional Engineers, the American Society of Civil Engineers, the American Public Works Association, and NJ Society of Municipal Engineers. And whereas, he has also volunteered his time unselfishly by serving the City of Linden on their planning board, where he has served numerous terms as chairman and vice chairman of Union County Economic Development Corporation, the New Jersey Site Improvement Advisory Board, and several other boards and commissions. And whereas Ormond met and married his wife Cecilia in 1949, a marriage that lasted 33 years until her death in 1982, and is the proud father of one daughter Sandra and three grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. Whereas July 20, 2021, the City of Linden honored Joseph Laplaca and along with his fellow long-term planning board member Ormond Fearetti and Board Secretary Marilyn Copeland for their unselfishness and their dedication to the City of Linden by renaming the planning board room the Laplaca, Fearetti, Copeland Planning Board Room. And whereas Ormond Fearetti's unselfish dedication to the citizens of Linden and the residents of Union County make him a truly remarkable individual, a true professional, whose efforts deserve the highest level of recognition, now therefore it be resolved by the mayor and county of Linden, I mean by the mayor and council of the City of Linden, that they hereby express their deepest appreciation and gratitude for Ormond Fearetti and his contributions to the City of Linden and the residents to make Linden a better place. Be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the City Council of the City of Linden, and a copy herein be presented to Ormond Fearetti in permanent recognition of the foregoing, and is signed by Michelle Yamakitis, myself, the mayor, and Joseph Bodick, the city clerk. And I often said...
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. I am heard in the city in great shape, and there's no way, this city is run so well because of people like Ormond, who led the charge and made sure they put things in place that this city would be a great place. And I just, again, I can't thank you enough for your hard work that you put into this city, and they're making a great city that it is.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I just want to...
I'd like to call up from our LEDC, Alex Lospinosa.
So I've been, I've been involved with the LEDC now for nearly 13 years, and since I came on board, Ormond has been at every single LEDC meeting that we've had in the last 13 years. I look at Ormond, and I truly see a dedicated public servant. Not only that, I've served on the planning board for about eight, nine years as well. As the mayor alluded to, I have learned so much from Ormond, the questions he asks, the ingress, egress, the snow removal. He has a wealth of knowledge that is institutional, and it's practically irreplaceable. And over time, as the city has really ramped up its efforts at redevelopment, our meetings have gone to two, two and a half, three hours with the LEDC, and Ormond has a new line, I'm not going to say, I don't know if it's new, but it's, it's become more common lately, and Ormond Fearetti, moving right along for our LEDC meetings. Not only that, I did some research in the archives of the LEDC, and it turns out, and he never even told me about it, I don't think he did at least, turns out, Ormond is one of the founding members of the LEDC in 1986, nearly 40 years ago. I don't know if he made every meeting since 1986, but he made every meeting since I've been here.
I think I made every meeting.
I think you did, and Ormond truly, I can't think of a better example of a true public servant, you know, doing the right thing, trying to move our city forward, and I am so appreciative to have served with you over the years, these boards. I appreciate your time and all the, everything that you've done for us, really, truly.
I mean, there's so much to be said, but I didn't know I did that much. I appreciate it, the awards and the resolution, and I certainly miss the City of Linden. I'm now in the Township of Cranford, which is right next door, so I sit at City of Linden quite often. Thank you. Thank you.
Ormond, I know you want to sit down, but I just want to say a few words, if you don't mind. Open mic, and here I am. I just want to mention what a mentor Ormond, Ormond as the county engineer, served under Mike Lapola as the county manager, Frank Dan as the department head, and our city engineer as a traffic engineer when he first started, and the mayor and I both worked at the county with him as well, and I just, he is definitely a father figure, and you know, just God bless you, man, you're just one of a kind, and we'll just really appreciate you.
And 97 years young. All right. Well, we have another resolution here. This is, this is thanking Joseph Laplaca III for his years of volunteer service to the City of Linden. And as I mentioned earlier, both him and Ormond were very instrumental in me understanding what was going on in the planning board. His famous, I don't know, his famous words was, "Mr. Armstead, do you have anything to comment on?" He would almost force me to comment, you know, because he didn't want me sitting up there not being part of the meeting, and of course, when you first start out, you really don't know a lot, so by him encouraging me to say things, after a while, it forces you to kind of speak and know what you want to, know what you're talking about. So again, ever indebted to him and Ormond for their tutelage and them teaching me and showing me the ropes on that planning board, and again, thank you for all that you've done for the city and myself. So we're going to read this, resolution thanking Joseph Laplaca III for his years of volunteer service to the City of Linden. It says, whereas on August 11, 2025, Joseph Laplaca submitted his resignation as a member of the planning board of the City of Linden, and in 45 years of dedicated service to the City of Linden as a member of the planning board, which began with his first appointment on February 17, 1987. Whereas 74 years ago, Joseph Laplaca III and his late wife Patricia chose to make Linden their home, and since that time, he has dedicated his time to developing Linden into the kind of community that they would want to continue to live in. And whereas, in addition to his service on the planning board, Joseph has also given freely his time to many other volunteer organizations, including the Linden Environmental Commission, the Advisory Board of the Center for Hope and Hospice, Director of the Linden Interfaith Network Community Service Links, a member and past Grand Knight of the Linden Knights of Columbus, past president of the Union County Federation of the Knights of Columbus, and whereas Joseph has proudly served his country as a member of the U.S. Coast Guard during World War II, and then as a member of the U.S. Army. And where Joseph, and whereas Joseph Laplaca, I'm sorry, and whereas Joseph Laplaca worked in the community, worked, his works in the community has earned his numerous recognitions, including being Linden's 2008 Senior Citizen of the Year, Benign Birth Americanism Award, and in 2014, the honor of throwing the switch at the City of Linden's annual tree lighting ceremony. And whereas on July 20, 2021, the City of Linden honored Joseph J. Laplaca along with fellow long-term planning board members Ormond Fearetti, Board Secretary Marilyn Copeland for their unselfish dedication to the City of Linden by renaming the planning board room as the Laplaca, Fearetti, Copeland Planning Board Room. Whereas Joseph Laplaca's unselfish dedication and caring for the citizens of Linden make him a truly remarkable individual, a true humanitarian with efforts, which efforts deserves the highest level of recognition by the governing body of this city. Now therefore be resolved by the mayor and council of the City of Linden, that they hereby express their deepest appreciation and gratitude to Joe J. Laplaca for all his contributions to the City of Linden and its residents to make Linden a better place, and be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the City Council of the City of Linden, and a copy hereof be presented to Joe Laplaca in permanent recognition of the foregoing, and once again is signed by Council President Michelle Yamakitis, Mayor Derek Armstead, myself, and Joseph Bodick. And once again, thank you for all you do.
Again, you leave me with open mic, if you've got trouble. So this is special because about a year or two ago, Joe and I found out that we're cousins. We were in Nick Pantina's office, and he starts talking about where he grew up, and he and Nick are going back and forth. We come to find out that he spent a lot of time on Palmer Street in Elizabeth, and it's where my mother grew up, and it turns out that his grandfather's last name is Sirocco, and my grandfather's last name is Sirocco, and they both came from the same town in Italy, and somewhere along the lines, we've got to be cousins, so it took, what, 30 something years for me to find out, Joe? Yeah, yeah, I think so, so welcome to the family.
Can you hear me? What I wanted to say, I was looking at those pictures up on the wall, and those are all the past mayors of this city, and how grateful we were. When I became the chair of the planning board, I was, didn't quite understand what the planning board was, so I got ahold of my father, and I said, "What is the planning board? Am I embarrassing myself and the family?" And he said, "No," he says, "remember you a person, and the people that are coming in front of you are looking for help, and make yourself assured that you're a helpful board." And I could say that about all mayors, all the mayors that I worked with, and I had at least five, and each one of them, the City of Linden was the number one issue. We were very proud of them, they did a wonderful job, and they were people, 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 how do I say this, people person, and they wanted to be a person's board. So thank you, Mayor, you did a wonderful job, you came to all the meetings that you were supposed to, you always were involved, because some of the mayors didn't show, but you always showed. So anyway, we always had something very interesting to say, and we had a wonderful experience that you send us once a year, you made us go, we went down to Atlantic City to the, to the board meetings down there, and we were all, we were all assured that anybody that's coming on the board as of now are trained or schooled, and they must have some sort of a recognition that if they're representing this city and they're sitting there, they are well qualified, and I thank you for that.
And Mr. Laplaca is another one who's 97 years young.
Okay, our next resolution is recognizing October as Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and at this time, I'd like to call up one of our employees, Michelle Charles Joseph, who is fighting against the disease. Just join us. Whereas, the month of October has been declared Breast Cancer Awareness Month nationwide. National Breast Cancer Awareness Month is an annual international health campaign to increase awareness of the disease and to raise funds for research into the cause, prevention, diagnosis, treatment, and cure. And whereas, the National Cancer Institute estimates that 316, 316, 950 women in the United States will be diagnosed with breast cancer in 2025, comprising over 15% of all new cancer cases. And whereas, the National Cancer Institute estimates that 42,170 women in nine states will die from breast cancer in 2025, comprising almost 7% of all cancer deaths. And whereas, breast cancer is the most common among middle-aged and older women, with a median age at the diagnosis of 63, but men can develop breast cancer as well. And whereas, the American Cancer Society recommends that all women between the ages of 45 and 54 be screened with a mammogram every year, and all women over the age of 55 be screened at least every other year. And whereas, the increased public awareness, improved screening, and improvement in treatment has resulted in a 40% decline in the national female breast cancer mortality rate in recent decades, according to the Radiological Society of North America. Whereas, Michelle Charles Joseph, a dedicated employee of the City of Linden and of her community, was diagnosed with breast cancer on November 21, 2024, and whereas, Michelle Charles Joseph endured the rigors of chemotherapy and other invasive treatments. And whereas, Michelle Charles Joseph has successfully completed her treatment and stands as a beacon of strength and courage to members of her community fighting this disease. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the council of the City of Linden, that they recognize her courage for fighting this disease and thank her for her dedication to serve the City of Linden through this difficult time. And whereas, be it further resolved that the governing body of the City of Linden declare October as National Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and wish to recognize those fighting this disease as they begin their journey to recovery, and those who have won the fight and are cancer-free. And be it further resolved that a copy of this resolution be placed in the minutes of the City Council of the City of Linden, and appropriately presented to Michelle Charles Joseph, and signed by myself and Mayor Armstead.
Over the last couple of years, we've been, I guess, more actively trying to make people aware of breast cancer and what we can do to prevent it. And so one of the themes that came out of this is, out of our efforts to try to make people aware, is something called "everything else can wait." And what that simply means is that sometimes mothers and even fathers who are diagnosed with breast cancer, we do everything else, we spend so much time helping our children, whatever we do, we're just spending all this time, and we're not taking care of ourselves. So when we say "everything else can wait," that means that put things aside and go get yourself tested, okay? Get yourself tested, because early detection is the key to defeating this disease. And thank God that she was able to get, have her breast cancer detected early just by going to do a mammogram. And that's the, your biggest weapon is going to get a mammogram and getting yourself tested so that you catch it early, you can fight it early, and you can be cancer-free, and that's what the goal is. So Michelle, you know you're one of our good workers here, and we love you, and I know you as a friend prior to just being an employee here, so you know, we want the best for you and your family, and we want the best for our city, so we're just so thankful and blessed that you've got, you've been treated, and you're back with us again. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. It's not a tear of sadness, it's a tear of joy. I would like to thank everyone for coming tonight. It's been a blessing, and it's been a journey. It has a lot of ups and downs. It has a lot of ups and downs. Through it all, I'm still standing. I will be standing, and I will fight to the end. Because I'm not, I don't have only myself to leave. I have my kids. So, yet again, thank you for everything you guys have done for me. You guys are my second family. Lex? Thank you. Stacy? Thank you. My department, my treasury department? Thank you. It's been a journey. It's not over, but I will fight this till the end. May God bless you all.
Okay, our next resolution this evening is declaring the month of October, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Linden. Whereas, domestic violence is a pattern of abusive behavior used to establish power and control over another or to intimidate or familiar a relationship. And whereas, reports have been indicated that domestic violence has been on the rise since the beginning of the COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas, domestic violence impacts victims, their children, other family members, friends, neighbors, and coworkers. And whereas, domestic violence affects individuals from all racial, ethnic, religious, educational, social, and economic backgrounds. And whereas, domestic violence has a disproportionate impact in communities most affected by trauma exposure, structural racism, and other health disparities. And whereas, domestic violence takes many forms, and the victims are often subjected to physical and emotional abuse, harassment, threats, financial abuse, and stalking. And whereas, domestic violence can cause victims to suffer physical and emotional trauma, anxiety, stress, and sleep deprivation, and has been linked to long-term health issues. And whereas, domestic violence is a chronically under-reported crime with less than twenty percent of victims reporting an injury from an intimate partner. And whereas, an estimated thirty percent to sixty percent of perpetrators of intimate partner violence also abuse children in a home. And whereas, survivors of domestic violence and their families need education relating to their legal rights, judicial proceedings, advocacy, counseling, and support services, shelter care, and crisis intervention. And whereas, the strength of the city of Linden relies on healthy, peaceful families and the safety of its residents, especially women and children. Now, therefore, be resolved by the mayor and council of the city of Linden, designate the month of October, 2025, as Domestic Violence Awareness Month in the city of Linden and sign by myself and Mayor Armstead, Mayor.
Thank you, thank you.
Just real quick. If you find yourself in a situation where you think you're going to be physically hurt or harmed, you know, that's what police are for. You call the police. That goes on both sides. But there's really no excuse for violence, because it's just, if you feel like you want to do something crazy, just kind of like, just walk away. Take a walk. Go out and get a breath of fresh air and take a walk around the block or something. Don't, but don't resort to putting your hands on your spouse under any circumstances, or your children, for that matter, if you're angry.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we're now going to move on to ordinances on hearing. Okay, ordinance is held from the May meeting, sixty-nine twenty-eight. Okay, can we have a motion to table that, please, to a future meeting?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to make a motion to table ordinance number sixty-nine twenty-eight to table to a future meeting. Request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. And ordinance sixty-nine twenty-nine from the May meeting. Can we have a motion also to table it to a future meeting, please?
Yes, Council President. I'd like to move sixty-nine twenty-nine to a future meeting. Request a second on that, too.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, we also have ordinance sixty-nine thirty-seven. It was continued from the September sixteenth, 2025, meeting. Okay, Mr. Clerk, do you want to read that? Or can you just make a motion?
One second. An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Seven, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November twenty-third, 1999, and approved November twenty-fourth, 1999, and has amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Linden, Section One, that Chapter Seven, Traffic, Section seven dash twenty-seven bus stops shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Seven dash twenty-seven bus stop delete, East Morris Avenue, westbound, on the north-lee side.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly posted and published?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I'd like to have the hearing on ordinance sixty-nine thirty-seven closed. The ordinance adopted. Request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Will now move on to ordinance sixty-nine forty-seven for this evening?
One second. An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Seven, Traffic of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November twenty-third, 1999, and approved November twenty-fourth, 1999, and has amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Linden, Section One, that Traffic, that Chapter Seven, Traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Chapter Seven, Traffic, seven dash thirty-three handicap parking regulations, seven dash thirty-three point one A handicap parking on street. Delete eight thirty-two Essex Avenue, one space, seven oh three Knopf Street, one space. Add seven oh three Knopf Street, one space, thirty-two West Tenth Street, one space.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I make a motion to close the hearing on sixty-nine dash forty-seven. Adopt it and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance sixty-eight forty-eight, please.
Sixty-nine forty-eight.
Oh, sixty-nine forty-eight.
In ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter Two, Administration of an Ordinance Entitled An Ordinance Adopting and Enacting the Revised General Ordinances of the City of Linden, 1999, passed November twenty-third, 1999, and approved November twenty-fourth, 1999, and has amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the council of the city of Linden, Section One, that Chapter Two, Administration, Article Four, Department Established, Section two dash twelve, Department of Police shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Two dash twelve, Department of Police. Delete Section two dash twelve point one created, Department of Police. Add new Section two dash twelve point one created, Department of Police as follows. Department of Police is hereby created pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon fourteen dash one eighteen, and shall consist of the following positions: one chief, five captains, fourteen lieutenants, twenty-four sergeants, one hundred and fifteen patrol officers, and force Leo, three officers, and civilian personnel as the council may determine by the ordinance. The department shall be under the day-to-day supervision and control of the chief pursuant to NJSA forty-eight, colon fourteen dash one eighteen, who shall be appointed by the mayor.
Okay, has the ordinance been properly published and posted?
Yes, ma'am.
Has any written communication been received?
No, ma'am.
Is there anyone from the public who wishes to be heard on this ordinance? Seeing none, can we have a motion, please?
Council President, I'd like to request the closing of the hearing on ordinance number sixty-nine forty-eight. The ordinance adopted, and I request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance sixty-nine forty-nine?
An ordinance to amend an ordinance entitled An Ordinance Establishing a Schedule of Titles, Salary Ranges, and Regulations for Maintaining the Classification and Salary Standardization Plan of All Employees of the City of Linden, passed August fifteenth, 1995, and approved August sixteenth, 1995, adopting salary schedule one dash TT dash one.
Can we have a motion, please, Councilman Strato?
Yes, Council President. I'm going to request that ordinance number sixty-nine forty-nine be tabled until the November meeting and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, next, we're moving on to consent agenda items. All items listed with asterisks are considered to be routine by the city council and will be enacted with one motion. We have items number one through three this evening. Can we have a motion, please?
Madam President, I move for approval of consent items one through three and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Will now move on to governing body reports, beginning with Councilwoman Orman in the first ward, please.
Thank you, Council President. I'm going to start off with our finance report. Approval is requested for the following finance actions: the payment of bills totaling four million, two hundred and twenty-four thousand, eight hundred and ninety-four dollars and sixty cents. Bills have been signed by the mayor, council president, and the finance chairwoman, and a detailed check register and vouchers are on file in the clerk's office. We are in receipt of the investments made by the city treasurer for the month of September at the rate of four point one five percent. In the Department of Finance, the approval is granted for the CFO to submit the best practices worksheet to Division of Local Government Services by the October twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five deadline. I move for approval and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Mrs. Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Go ahead, Councilwoman.
Okay, now for my Division of Traffic, Transportation, and Properties. I hereby submit the monthly financial report from the Division of Transportation and Parking for the month of September, two thousand and twenty-five. This report includes the collection of on- and off-street parking meters, railroad parking lots, railroad parking permits, and merchant parking permits. The Trenton side collections, one thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars. New York side collections, one thousand, four hundred and twenty-two dollars. Railroad credit card transactions, twenty-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Railroad permits, two hundred and seventy dollars. Railroad mobile payment, twenty-three twenty parking, fourteen thousand, four hundred and sixty-one dollars and forty-five cents. Online railroad permits, thirteen thousand, eight dollars. Parking meter collections, eight thousand, five hundred and ninety dollars and twenty-five cents, and merchant permits, forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents, for a grand total of sixty-nine thousand, two hundred and twenty-nine dollars and thirty-three cents, submitted by Frankie Urban III, the parking meter collections and repairer. I'm just going to have a real brief report, ward report. I just want to say congratulations to our team who has really put a damper on the illegal car repair shops that were up in the Sunnyside and the Tenth Ward area. I'm letting everybody know in the first ward, you're next. If you think you're going to pull your cars out and have your garages and start repairing cars making our quality of life miserable, think again. So, first ward, car repair shops, you're next. I'd also like to just mention again that we have a wonderful new tool that captures data real-time through our traffic department. It kind of like works in the same way that Waze and Google Maps works by using the apps that you download, capturing the data, and we can actually track how fast cars are going, speeding, the whole gamut, congestion. So, right now, we have two of our officers that are up to speed with the program. We're going to be training two more. I'm asking that any one, any of our council people, if you have streets in your ward that are problematic, please send that to committee. Do not call our traffic lieutenants. Send it through committee. We will be evaluating and prioritizing the streets that are in need first for this analysis. But once again, this particular program will let us know whether or not we have a speeding occurrence, a speeding concern, or whether we really have a bona fide speeding crisis in a particular area. And then, last but not least, the holiday, we'll be here before you know it, the Christmas holiday. So, I would like to just let everybody know that on December seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth, I will be hosting a holiday craft make-and-take. We will be doing wooden crafts, felt crafts, holiday bracelets for Kwanzaa, for Hanukkah, as well as Christmas. And for anyone that does not celebrate any of those holidays, you can still come and make a generic craft. But it's going to be open for the three days, sixty children per evening, because the location can't hold anymore to be in the first ward at Wilson Pond. Registration forms will be available, or a method to register will be available. And once again, it's going to be open for children between, I would say, five and fifth grade, the little kids that like to paint and do things of that nature. Once again, sixty kids per session for three sessions, December seventeenth, eighteenth, and nineteenth. And my goal is to have a gift for each child that comes in and makes a craft that day. That ends my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Javik?
Yes, Council President. As Chairman of the Fire Committee, the Fire Prevention Bureau collected the following monies during the month of September, 2025, a total of eight thousand, three hundred and twenty-three dollars and sixty-five cents. Regarding our Linden Fire Department emergency... Regarding our Linden Fire Department Emergency Medical Service Collections, the amount of $110,953.50 for September 2025 have been added to the total deposits for 2025, totaling Regarding our Board of Health, our annual health fair was once again a very successful event, sincere thanks to the wide variety of local health and wellness-focused businesses and organizations that distributed information, gave referrals, and provided giveaways to attendees, and the several organizations that provided free health screenings and services. These services included blood pressure, blood sugar, blood cholesterol screenings, flu, COVID-19, and shingles vaccinations, female and male cancer screenings, and distribution of colorectal cancer test kits, skin cancer screenings, vision and hearing screenings, and more. We're also grateful for the time and efforts of the other city departments and organizations that made this event possible, DPW, Police Department, Fire Department, Recreation, and Board of Education. Special thanks go to all the businesses and organizations that donated supplies and raffle items, that would be ShopRite, Andy's Cycle Center, Northfield Bank, Men Life Broker, Clinical Research Center of New Jersey, and last but not least, we thank all the Board of Health staff and volunteers for their hard work in planning and running the event. There's been some federal changes to COVID-19 vaccine recommendations. The Advisory Committee on Immunization Practices, during its most recent meeting on September 19, voted to recommend COVID-19 vaccinations for adults 65 and older. They also voted for anyone below that age to be subject to a process called shared clinical decision-making. The full details on this process have not yet been determined, but one requirement is for any individual under 65 seeking COVID-19 vaccine is to first speak with a clinician. Now regarding our construction code, this department has issued 115 permits and processed 57 certificates and has issued 94 summonses for the month of September 2025. The monthly revenue is as follows: building CCO permits and additional permit fees, $143,098; zoning, $1,850; court settlements for the month, $13,450. The reflective total of this is $158,398. At this time, I would like to move for approval of a street light for insulation. This is on the light pole number 60965LD, located on the corner of East Curtis Street and Washington Avenue, and I request a second.
Second. Mrs. Ormond?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas? Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Good evening, everybody. Well, fortunately and unfortunately, work continues in our ward with the new gas main that's being welded, causing traffic on Elizabeth Avenue, and leaded service lines are still being remediated. In addition, a new cable service is also rolling out fiber lines throughout the area. I'd like to also, at this time, congratulate our fire department and staff for an outstanding fire prevention night that we just had on October 3. If you missed it this year, as a recommendation, please attend with your family and friends next year. Upcoming, we are more, in the ward, we're going to be doing more residential parking permits on our ward streets, expanding out the program and looking forward to implementing our park study program with improvements for our residents. And one last other thing, as a reminder, our City of Linden Board of Health Ordinance 2023-02 requires that all owners of residential rental dwelling units must register their tenant information. Residential rental dwelling units include, but are not limited to, apartment buildings, multiple-family dwellings, and single-family homes. This information must be updated on tenant turnover. Also, basements cannot be used as sleeping quarters. Failure to comply with this will result in legal action, which can include notices of violation, summonses to municipal court, fines, or other penalties. Thank you all for your cooperation.
Councilman, you need more time?
I can be reached at 908-494-4608, or email me at bjavik@linden-newjersey.gov. On Facebook, Second Ward Councilman Barry Javik. And as always, additional information can always be found on our City of Linden website. Council President, end of report.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Caldwell?
Thank you, Madam President. Good evening, Third Ward neighbors. I'd like to begin with important update regarding SNAP and WIC. While both programs remain open and fully operational, there is a growing concern that the federal uncertainty could impact access to these critical services in the coming months. Right now, SNAP benefits are guaranteed through October 31 and WIC through November 10 of 2025. More than 800,000 New Jersey residents rely on SNAP, and nearly 165,000 women and children depend on WIC for healthy food and nutrition support. The state of New Jersey is committed to keeping residents informed. Updates can be found on njsnap.gov, nj.gov/health, and nj.gov/foodsecurity. Now, let's talk about our youth. Parents, did you know that your children can attend Union County Vocational Technical School while still in high school? Students can start as early as 10th grade, and the application deadline for the next school year is in early December. Not every child wants to go to college, and that's okay. Trades like welding, electrical work, and plumbing are in high demand. I'm working with the Linden High School, Union County, VOTEC, PSCNG, and Local 475 to connect students with apprenticeships and programs that allow them to learn what they earn. These programs lead to lifelong skills, strong income, and solid careers. And finally, I want to thank the residents of 10 North Wood Avenue for your patience during the ongoing construction at Elizabeth and Wood Avenue. I know it's been frustrating. I want to sincerely apologize for the inconvenience, including the temporary bus stop relocation. I have requested a traffic officer to be placed at Wood Avenue and Elizabeth Ave to help with safety and traffic flow. The good news is the bus stop will be moved within the next five days. I want to thank New Jersey Transit, the Linden Police Department, and their partnership for their partnership and assistance. Our New Jersey Transit point of contact going forward will be Ms. Natasha Clark, our business administrator. And once construction at 1 West is complete, the bus stop will return to its original location. This is a win for our residents and our community. Thank you for your patience, your partnership, and continued commitment to making Linden better. Thanks for allowing me to be your voice, because without you, there is no me. I report to you and no one else. I believe in holding people accountable. Thank you for coming to the community meeting. Our next meeting will be held in February 2026. I would like to take a moment to thank all the city employees for everything you do each and every day. As we recognize Breast Cancer Awareness Month, I want to honor the memory of my late grandmother, Martha Judah, who passed away from breast cancer at just 33 years old, and my late aunt, who bravely fought breast cancer twice, and breast cancer did not kill my aunt. And we must never forget the battling domestic violence every day. The New Jersey Domestic Violence Hotline is 1-800-572-7233. Please share it, and it could save a life. Remember to get your mammogram and encourage others to do the same. I can be reached at 908-531-0676, or by email at mcallwell@hm, I'm sorry, mcallwell, I'm calling, I'm giving my other, mcallwell@linden-p s.org. And as always, remember, Councilwoman Caldwell always follows up and follows through. That concludes my report, Council President.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Rivas?
Thank you, Madam President. First and foremost, I'd like to congratulate again Mr. Joseph LaPlaca and his family. They are neighbors in the 5th Ward. They have been a family living in the ward for many, many years. I'm a resident of the 5th Ward for almost 20 years, and I have been heard and learned lots of the contributions. For many of the people, they may not know, as leaders that they have been in the area, Mr. LaPlaca and his families were part of the 5th Ward Democratic Committee, one of the committees that was formed in order to make sure that the voice of the people, the voice of the citizens in the 5th Ward would be heard. I also like to echo to the challenges that our ward has had with the construction happening on Elizabeth Avenue. I guess it goes to many of our wards, it's one of the very busy traffic roads to our neighbors, Humbering Avenue, and the adjacent roads that they get, have got that heavy traffic and construction in the area. And for everyone in the ward, I'd like to echo my counterpart councils, members of council that says that all this work is needed, is needed, because we need to upgrade the tools and the system and the services that we are to receive, not only for the city, but the public companies out there. We need to also understand that this is going to assist all of us to get a better quality of our life in our city. I'd like to continue to salute the diversity on our ward and in the city. I'd like to continue to say thank you to our city employees. You are the reason why this city continues to run. Your officials are the boys, are the people who makes the decisions out here, but you are the ones running the city. The city belongs to the citizens, and thanks to you, the city continues to run day in and day out. I'd like to say thank you to the committee who organized the Latin Festival in Linden. As member of the Hispanic community, I'm honored that we are being recognized in our city. Our community is growing, as well as many other communities in the city, and I am convinced that this city council or any administration in the city will continue to honor all of the diversity on our city. I also want to make reference, as I initially said, about the brave neighbors of the city, all my neighbors or citizens on the ward that like to make change. I would like to say that although this is, I cannot make comments about political agendas, I want to congratulate Olivia Rodriguez, one of our city citizens on the 5th Ward, a neighbor, a friend, a person that I have been knowing for so many years, that is now running a ticket for the Board of Education. She's running together, I guess she's running with other people that would like to have change in the city. Olivia, you got my support, you have been a good neighbor, you have been a great resident and a good constituent for our city. Last, I want to remind everyone that comes here to the city council that is your voice, the voice that we want to continue to hear, is the voice of the constituents, the ones that makes your city officials work for the best of the city. If you want change, don't wait for it. It's now time to go to the polls and vote for it. Thank you, that's all my, that's my report. Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Delgado?
Good evening, everyone. I first want to acknowledge our employee Michelle and her fight for breast cancer, and I want to acknowledge all her colleagues that came to support her, and what a beautiful sign of solidarity and support. So, thank you, all of you. You truly are the best of this city, and it makes me proud that I get to represent you and that you all work for us, for our residents. Thank you, thank you so much. On a slightly more note, the update, last month, I told everyone that the 109 study by the state of New Jersey was going to be done, and there were going to be signage up for the trucks, and I was hoping that this month I would be able to report that the signs would be there. There are no signs there. So, we are following up with the state. Once again, they told me that they were filing the permits, so I hope that before the end of the year, we know that things move slowly at the state, we'll have signage there to help with those illegal trucks that keep going onto our residential roads, blocking boxes, and doing all sorts of things. So, hopefully, to be discussed next month. I do want to acknowledge all the employees that put on a wonderful, the Latin Festival, the Polish Festival, all of the festivals that occurred over the last few months in our city. We are a great city of diversity. Linden is the world, and that's what makes Linden a special place. On the topic of festivals, I want to really give a big shout-out to the parents who run the School 6 PTA. Wow, the Fall Festival was truly amazing to see how much devotion and dedication that so many of our parents and residents of the 6th Ward have to give back to this community. Thank you. Thank you from the bottom of my heart, because that's what makes the 6th Ward such a great place to live, is the residents of the 6th Ward. On Woodlawn, Councilwoman Ormond and I have had many conversations about Woodlawn Avenue. We do have two additional signage to say 25 miles per hour, one on each side of Woodlawn, so on motel side and on the other side, and we'll do more if we have to do more. And there are other streets that I had to flag as well for speeding. Speeding is an issue, running red lights, running stop signs. I was trying to cross over the 109 the other day, a truck, literally ran the red light, just kept going, and I just, I couldn't believe it. We have to do better, adults, all of us, and the people who need to hear this or not actually listening to this, but we need to be more mindful and better that we have lots of kids in our community, and we need to keep them safe. Trees, 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 we've been trimming trees, taking down dead trees. It's been a process. Thank you, DPW, and our employees who have been taking care of those things. Today alone, I got five more requests for tree trimmings and whatnot. If it's private property, though, unfortunately, that is a private matter, but if it's on city property, we'll take care of it. So, please, keep sending in your requests. 6th Ward is a very active ward. I have a lot of residents reach out all the time, and it's, I don't take it for granted at all. On not taking things for granted, I would be remiss if I did not acknowledge that I have a former member of the Linden Education Association in the audience, and I used to be the president of the Linden Education Association, serving her, and now I serve her in a different capacity. I want to thank you for your comments yesterday, and I just want to say that the number 20,000 is seared in my brain. It's seared in my brain because that's the amount of children that have died in Gaza since the conflict began. And when we think about children, when we think about all the conflicts around the world and the great diversity that exists, I'm going to be 37 tomorrow, and I can't help but notice that as I age, the same problems keep happening throughout the world. We know better as humans. We need to see our common humanity, have empathy for one another, for all the children of the world that have died in conflicts, for all children who are stuck in households with domestic violence, for all children that are stuck in horrific conditions. Let us please do better and acknowledge our common humanity. I truly fear where we're going, and I hope that when I turn 37, we'll have a better world. Thank you, Council President.
Happy birthday. Happy birthday. Councilman Strato?
Thanks, Council President. If you would entertain a little bit of extra time, because this is a long report, and I've got some ward report as well. So, in the Personnel Department agenda, starting off with the Police Department, we're approving the appointment of five public safety telecommunications trainees, full-time from the attached list, which is effective November 17 of 2025, at the annual salary of $44,000, subject to successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Be is approving the appointment of Yuznilez Talez, a special law enforcement officer three. B is approving the appointment of Yuznilez Talez, Special Law Enforcement Officer III, part-time, effective October 22nd of 2025, and that's at the hourly rate of $40 an hour, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. C is approving the conditional appointment of two police officer recruits, full-time, from the attached list at the salary of $45,521, subject to the successful completion of the city's pre-employment requirements. Appointment shall be effective January 1st, 2026, for the January 2026 academy class. D is approving the promotion of Gavin Sheehan to the rank of Police Lieutenant, full-time at the salary of $147,533, effective November 1st of 2025. E is approving the promotion of Adam Micalijak to the rank of Police Lieutenant, full-time at the salary of $147,533, effective November 1st, 2025. F is approving the promotion of Philip Palmer to the rank of Police Sergeant, full-time, at the salary of $128,496, effective November 1st of 2025. G is approving the promotion of Matthew Jones to the rank of Police Sergeant, full-time, at the salary of $128,496, effective November 1st of 2025. H is approving the resignation of Sergio Cabrera, Public Safety Telecommunicator, effective April 13th of 2025. Two, in Community Services, Division of Public Works, approving the statewide posting for two mechanics, Tier Two, full-time at the range of $18 to $49.09 per hour. B is accepting the voluntary resignation of Clemmie McIntyre, motorbrune operator, full-time, effective September 22nd of 2025. C, approving the amended start date for Elijah Smith, truck driver, full-time, to September 15th of 2025. D is approving the appointment of Jorge Diggs, laborer, Tier Two, full-time, at the annual rate of $19.32 per hour, effective October 22nd of 2025. E is approving the seasonal list on file in the Clerk's Office. In Division of Transportation and Property, A is accepting the resignation of Good Standing James Kendernerzki, Maintenance Repair One, full-time, effective October 24th of 2025. B is accepting the resignation of Good Standing for Julian Donovan, a laborer, full-time, effective October 23rd of 2025. And the Health Department approving the following listed individuals as volunteers for the Linden Health and Wellness Fair to be held on October 11th of 2025. Gene Carlos Carpio, Myra Bernard, Ethan Hodasi, Lilian Carabali, Eric Cardenas, Johann Delkarmen, Jessica Ulyse, Noria Rosia, Goodwin RN, and Christine M. Azon RN. And the Recreation Department approving the transfer of Carrie Smith, Clerk One, to the Department of Recreation at no change in salary, effective October 8th, 2025. B is approving the seasonal list that's on file in the Clerk's Office. And the Office of the Mayor, the Constituent Services, approving the change in hours to Simba Gill, Clerk One, part-time, not to exceed 25 hours per week, effective October 1st of 2025. Is approving the change in hours for Justin Bowlin, Clerk One, part-time, do not exceed 25 hours a week, effective October 20th of 2025. And the Personnel Department approving FMLA NJFLA leaves that are on file in the Division of Personnel, and B is approving the minimum wage to $15.92 per hour, effective December 31st of 2025. A move for approval, and ask for a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormon.
Yes.
Javik.
Yes.
Caldwell.
Yes.
Rivas.
Delgado.
Yes.
Strano.
Yes.
Armstead.
Yes.
Rodriguez.
Yes.
Hudak.
Yes, to all except the four A.
Mrs. Yamakaitis.
Yes.
Will the police officers that were just promoted please stand? Congratulations. Okay, that's it for the Personnel Department. I have a little report for my ward here. So, last Friday, October 17th, we had a cleanup again. This was with volunteers. These are Blue Acres properties, these are the properties that were purchased, houses that were flooded during Sandy Storm, mainly along Madison Avenue, Arthur Street, and Irene Street properties. We had 40 people show up to volunteer for that cleanup. Phillips 66, Infineum, Sunoco, Energy Transfer, which is Sunoco Pipeline, Conserved Wildlife New Jersey, Groundworks Elizabeth, Enviroscapes, Linden Division of Engineering, which was, had Bruno, Stephanie, and Joe Crowbeck. Linden Public Works, headed up by Shane Galette and his crew. Blue Acres is a program the state of New Jersey purchased homes at market value from residents that had experienced those damages, as I said before, from the flooding. The properties are to remain undeveloped, and the city of Linden was fortunate to receive grants from the cooperation of Rutgers University and the U.S. Fish and Wildlife. It was like a $2 million grant, and that's where all of these, natural restoration of these properties' monies came from, including all the rain gardens. We still have to maintain these properties, and rather than just have them sitting there with just flat grass, there were a lot of native species that were replanted there. And I just want to shout out and thank you to all those people that worked there that day. After seven years, we're really starting to see the fruits of our labors out there. I happen to be crazy enough to go out there and pitch in too. There's pictures on Facebook. My wife's, her page has pictures of all the work, and it was, you know, beautiful weather, and it really, really showed how nice these properties are starting to come along. And I want to shout out to the Engineering Department for the great work that they're doing with the road repairs in Seventh Ward, mainly like 16th Street and basically in Tremley as well. Shout out to Anthony, our inspector, he's doing a great job out there. We're getting really good cooperation with the neighbors, and I think the paving is scheduled maybe for another week or two, they'll start milling and paving those roads. Been a long time coming. And the Engineering Department also has a report that there's going to be a 16-inch water main going down the middle of Lower Road from Avenue C to the area near Buckeye Pipeline. That's the first segment that's supposed to start November 1st. The next segment will be a 36-inch water main that's going to be up from the beginning of that, going up Avenue C towards the Conrail Crossing, and the following segments will proceed towards Route 109 and eventually terminate on the Merck property in the late spring. All areas disturbed will be resurfaced curb-to-curb, which is a windfall for us because we can't pave those roads, they're not ours. The Avenue C doesn't, is a private road, and if anybody's driven on that road, they know how terrible the surface is. So, that's a good thing that's going to happen in the springtime as well. I think that's all I have for this month. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Strano. Councilman Armstead.
Yes, thank you, Council President. First, I want to speak about the events that we have going on this upcoming week. On the 25th, which is Saturday, we have a pumpkin painting and pizza that we're going to have at the JTG Center, that's 330 Helen Street, from 11:00 to 1:00. There is a $5 fee for this festival that we're having, for the festivities there. And on the 26th, we're having our annual Halloween Parade. It's going to start at 2:00, right on Wood Avenue. And the 31st, which is Halloween Day, we have our annual Harvest Fest at the LMPC. It's 1025 John Street. That'll be from the hours from 5:00 to 7:00. We'd like all you guys to come out and please support. Okay, now, we're going to get down to what's going on. First, I wanted to talk about, about two and a half weeks ago, there was a horrific accident on Cranford Avenue. Somebody lost their life, and this is a reason why we should not be speeding down these streets. You know, when you see somebody, and it really hurts even more when you see somebody that's young, and I'm talking about 20 years old, leave their life, lose their life, they haven't had a chance to live. So, I'm just asking everybody, please be cautious, slow down, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour. Now, since then, we did get some signs of 25 mile per hour signs, and that's like near Cranford and Dale. It's a school area, it's also an area where the senior citizens live, and we need to be conscious of what we're doing. Okay, as far as roadwork being done, Chandler Avenue did get paved. We're still waiting to get the lines painted, which is very simple. Greer Avenue in South Park, that project is being pushed off till spring. Okay, weather has to be certain temperature in order to get some of this work done. I said the lines are going to be painted on Chandler Avenue. Also, Elizabeth, not Elizabeth, Elizabeth Avenue, of course, we know there's a lot of work going on there. The road's going to be a little bit bumpy for a minute, but everything is going to be repaired as soon as possible. And anybody that has any concerns, please feel free, you can call me at 908-463-8986, or you can email me at marmstead@linden-nj.gov. And that's all I have for this evening.
Thank you, Councilman Armstead. Councilman Rodriguez.
Thank you, Council President. Good evening, all. As the crisp air of fall settles in, I want to take a moment to remind everyone to keep our neighborhood clean by raking and properly disposing of your leaves. With the days getting shorter and they're getting darker earlier, I also urge all drivers to stay alert and watch out for our neighbors walking in the evening. Safety starts with each other. I would also like to take, I would also like to take this opportunity to remind everyone about the upcoming election, November 4th of 2025. Voting is not only our right, but it's also our duty as Americans, especially in times like these. Your voice matter, your votes help, shapes the future of our community. I also want to echo Councilmen Delgado and Councilman Armstead. We hear your concerns. The mayor and council members are actively working with the Linden Police Department to increase patrol in our streets, addressing issues with speeding and drivers ignoring stop signs. If you have any questions or concerns, please don't hesitate to reach me at 908-858-0269 or email at arodriguez@linden nj.gov. Thank you, and let's continue working together to keep Linden a safe and clean and strong place to live in. Thank you, Council President.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilwoman Hudak.
Thank you. So, the leaves are beginning to fall, and you have two options. You could rake and put them in the street, or you could put them in bags. Now, the city of Linden is not on a set schedule, it's not on our sanitation calendar. The Department of Public Works, they're going to execute a plan, and they will do an amazing job of cleaning up the leaves, but we are always asking and requesting for your cooperation. The next month that's coming up, we are honoring our veterans, and there is one day on the calendar that we honor all our veterans for their service. But my message to you is while that this is a date that will forever serve as a solemn remembrance and a tribute to our veterans, please take time to honor the spirit of our nation, because remember the day we understand that the right wing and the left wing are part of the same bird, only then can the eagle fly and the United States of America be great. Sure, we have our issues, we have our challenges, but we live in the best country of the world, and there's simply no other place like it. So, God bless America, and that concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilwoman Hudak. Okay, my report this evening, I'd like to thank Michelle Charles Joseph for coming forth with her treatment and diagnosis of breast cancer. Jessica Sheehan had made the recommendation, and I called her asking if there's any, what she could recommend in the city, and she brought her name forward, and I thank her for letting us honor her. I thank our Treasury Department for all the support they showed to her and continued to show her during her treatment. I would like to also express my deepest condolences to the family and friends of Wayne Zuba, a retired Public Works employee who passed away recently. After his retirement, Wayne moved to South Jersey, but he always remained connected with his friends and former colleagues. He even hosted an annual luncheon for the retired Public Works employees. Wayne was known for his willingness to help others in need. May he rest in peace. I would like to also take this opportunity to recognize one of my colleagues here on council, Councilwoman Lisa Ormon. She recently received the unsung hero as a parent advocate from the Inroads in Roselle, an organization dedicated to working with individuals on the autism spectrum. Lisa Ormon is not only an exceptional mother of two children on the spectrum, but also a tireless advocate for many individuals and families. Congratulations, Councilwoman Ormon. Show your plaque. I asked you to bring it here this evening. Thank you, thank you, Council President. And well-deserved honor. Okay, I'd like to also thank Sandra Jackson for all her help with all these festivals that recently took place. We were a part of planning the Polish Festival, so I'd like to thank Danuda Laskowska for all her efforts in vendors and things like that. It takes a village to get this all done, so Sandy, thank you for spearheading this. This is a woman I don't think that ever sleeps. So, thank you, Sandy. Okay, for the library, the Friends of the Linden Library will be holding its annual book sale all day on November 9th and 10th, and on November 11th, they will hold the Bag Day for the book sale from 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Please come out to support the Friends of Linden Library. They help support programs like the Dolly Parton Imagination Library for our youngest residents in Linden, and other great programs that the library hosts. And as some of my colleagues have mentioned, this Sunday, October 26th, is our annual Halloween Parade. This year, the theme of the parade will be focusing on the 100th anniversary of Linden, which will be concluding this year. This parade has played an important part of Linden history over the years. We ask you to come out and support the parade, whether marching in it or being a spectator, be a part of Linden history. And I'd like to also give kudos to the Fall Festival at School Six. I attended that Friday afternoon with my grandson, and he had a blast. It was so nice to see a little school in Linden doing so much for the community. The PTA went above and beyond, so thank you for that. Okay, and happy birthday, Councilman Delgado, tomorrow, from all of us here. Wish you the best in the upcoming year, and if anyone needs to reach me, my number is Okay, Mayor Armstead, you're up.
Good evening, everyone. First, I'd like to address the letter that went out to residents in reference to a community solar project endorsed by the City of Linden and my office. The company Active Solar has placed hundreds of solar panels on one of our larger warehouses in our Linden Logistics Warehousing Center down in Tremley Point. They received approval from the state of New Jersey, for which our residents in Linden will have the opportunity to save 35% on their existing electric bills, starting around January 2026, most importantly, without putting solar panels on their own homes. I encourage all residents to enroll in this project, as spots will be very limited. And I can tell you, my electric bill has gone up tremendously this year, especially with the increase in rates and the fact that I have a bunch of kids at home, it doesn't help any also. So, this may be a great opportunity for all of our residents to cut utility costs. So, to enroll in this program, or if you have any questions, please call 929-928-3874. If you should receive a call from anyone else regarding switching your service or enrolling in some sort of program, don't hesitate to call my office at 474-8495, 908-474-8495, and we will help you determine whether or not the people who are trying to pitch some sort of sale to you are legitimate or not. And again, we're only endorsing one program, and that is the company called Active Solar. Okay? I'd like to congratulate Gavin Sheehan, Adam Micalijak, and Philip Palmer, and Matthew Jones on their promotions in the Police Department. As the titular head of the Police Department, it's my job to make sure that we're fully staffed and fully manned, and that we're utilizing our resources to the best of our ability, and I think all of these gentlemen who are promoted will do a fine job, and that is an expectation of mine, as well as this governing body. I'm also happy to announce, since our last council meeting, we had four long-awaited ribbon-cutting ceremonies, Codoba, Holiday Inn Express, Blaze Pizza, and Aspen Dental. They are officially open for business. As you can see, the ribbon cuttings over the last couple of months and even years are clear demonstration of the strength and the growth of our local economy. We anticipate more ribbon cuttings by year's end. We anticipate, we anticipate more ribbon cuttings by year's end, including Dave's Hot Chicken, Duck Donuts, Five Below, and many others. In reference to our affordable housing needs, I have two fantastic updates to share with our residents and our governing body. First, the city has now collected just shy of $1 million in non-residential development fees, for which we're at $996,000 in just under six months. Again, these fees are going to be utilized to ensure that we continue on a path to satisfy our affordable housing obligations. Secondly, my staff had a fair, my staff had a meeting last week with the Fairshire Housing Center in reference to our affordable housing obligations, and it seems like there is a clear path forward. And we were advised by the state that they're very pleased with our approach to addressing the statutory requirements with regards to our affordable housing responsibilities. So once again, we will be able to meet the requirements of the state, and we will continue to collect money, and we're expecting a tremendous amount of money to come in the next few months with our non-residential development fees. And last, but certainly not least, I'm going to echo my sentiments of the Sixth Ward Councilmen with regards to the children who are dying in Palestine. It's a travesty, it really truly is. Children and women should not be victims of war, especially innocent women and children. There's, as far as I'm concerned, a genocide taking place there. When children and women are killed and when food is, basic food is being denied. So, and I think that those of us who don't speak to it are just as guilty as those who are committing the atrocity. Now, we may not be able to do anything other than speak to it, but at the very least, we should speak to it, because I'll tell you quite honestly, when I get home at night, I turn that TV off. I can't, I can't even stand to watch it anymore. You know, I see innocent children just being just murdered, for lack of better words, and starvation, which is, there's no room, there's no reason at all why anybody should be preventing food from being disseminated to people who are in need. So we could probably go on and talk about this for the rest of the evening, but again, it's very disturbing, and again, those of us who are afraid to speak to it are just as guilty of those who are committing the atrocities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, just a reminder, anyone who wishes to speak during the public comment portion of the meeting, if you have not done so, please sign in on the white sheets in the front of the room. Okay, we're now going to move on to our resolutions for this evening. Can we have a motion to approve Resolution 387 through 417, please?
Council President, I move for approval of Resolutions 2025-387 through 2025-417, and request a second.
Second.
Mrs. Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Everything yes, except 2025-416.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, we'll now move on to ordinances on first reading, starting with Ordinance 6950, please.
An ordinance amending Chapter 2, Section 13.5 BE2, entitled Third Party Payment Plan for Emergency Medical Services. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 2-13.5 BE2, entitled Third Party Payment Plan for Emergency Medical Services, shall be amended to read as follows. This ordinance amends various fees.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6950, please?
Council President, I move for introduction of Ordinance Number 6950, and request a second.
Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez? Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance 6951, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic, Section 7-12 parking time limited shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-12.1 time limit parking, two-hour parking at East Baltimore Avenue, both sides, 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Monday through Sunday, between East St. George's Avenue to Union Street.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6951, please?
Council President, I make a motion to introduce Ordinance 6951, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance 6952, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic, Section 7-15.1 parking decals shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-15 parking by permit only in designated residential areas. 7-15.1 parking decals. 17.15.1i, the following street, shall be affected by this section from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, not including Sundays and legal holidays. Delete the existing section in its entirety and add new section.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6952, please?
Council President, I make a motion to introduce Ordinance 6952, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance 6953, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, Chapter 7 traffic, Section 7-22 stop intersections shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Delete section in its entirety and add new section pursuant to the provisions of NJ SA 39:4-140.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6953, please?
Council President, I make a motion that we introduce Ordinance 6953, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance 6954, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. 7-15 parking by permit only in designated residential areas. 7-15.7 residential overnight parking permit. Delete 7-15.7(c), North Park area in its entirety. 7-15.7(c), Bayway area in its entirety, and add new section, 7-15.7(c), North Park Avenue area.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6954, please?
Council President, I make a motion to introduce Ordinance 6954, and ask for a second, please.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Ordinance 6955, please.
An ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 7 traffic of an ordinance entitled, an ordinance adopting and enacting the revised general ordinances of the City of Linden 1999, passed November 23rd, 1999, and approved November 24th, 1999, and as amended and supplemented. Be it ordained by the Council of the City of Linden, Section 1, that Chapter 7 traffic, Section 7-13 parking prohibited for street cleaning and maintenance shall be in the same as hereby amended as follows. Delete Hayes Street, add Hayes Street South Side on Tuesdays from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m., and on North Side Friday from 6:00 a.m. to 11:00 a.m.
Okay, can we have a motion for introduction of Ordinance 6955, please?
Council President, I make a motion to introduce Ordinance 6955, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Ormon?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell? Rivas? Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Houdak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. We'll now move on to comments from members of the public in attendance. We're going to begin with Mr. Craig Halloran.
Craig Halloran, 120 Donaldson Place. My first one is, I've been hearing, I was out in the Seventh Ward over the weekend campaigning, and I've heard from people out there that some campaign signs that are being stolen off of people's lawns that are not on or in the city's property area between the sidewalk and the curb or whatever the thing, these were farther back on the people's lawns. I'd just like to point that out. Ordinance on introduction, I know I brought this up last night at the caucus meeting. Third-party payment plan for emergency medical services, please. I mean nothing bad about our fire department, I love all of them, you know, and I love all our city employees, I think people here know that. But to me, and it's just an issue of how I look at this, we're having a third party billing people after we already paid the taxes to pay for services. So to me, it sounds like we're paying twice if we use the service. So that means that, you know, a way to look at it could also be, well, I go to pay my taxes, so therefore I get an extra fee because I went and paid my taxes, and I'm using the city's services to pay my taxes, so I get an extra bill. It's just a comment. Then on Ordinance on Introduction, 6952, parking by permit in designated residential areas, this sounds like the city is clamping down on people that don't live on certain streets, restricting parking only to people that live on a street. I mean, again, it's just the way I looked at this, and I'd like some comments, please. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Halloran. Okay, as far as the signs, we have been doing a cleanup. We've had complaints, like even some of our festivals. The city's been doing a citywide cleanup of anything on public property in the city right of way between the curb and the sidewalk. So a lot of construction signs have been picked up, things like that, okay? So that's what's the issue with...
No, but these, these were, you know, the way it was explained to me, that these were much farther back, closer to the house, and, you know, it's just, look, I hear things around the city. I bring them up at meetings, I, people here know that.
But anything on the public right of way?
Yes.
We're in the process of cleaning.
That was explained to me very nicely by somebody from Public Works.
If anybody needs any signs that might have been picked up, any contractors, whatever, they could call the Public Works Department and pick them up, okay?
Okay.
All right, thank you, Mr. Halloran.
Thank you.
Okay, Dennis Comey?
Dennis Comey, 135 Palisade Road.
Go ahead, sir.
Little confused about this tax increase on my property. Airport, the old airport, 31 businesses, which include ShopRite, Target, Home Depot, GM Property, 36 businesses, including six warehouses. We got three apartment complexes that are built and two more almost finished. Road closures, we're getting thousands from those road closures, because I know I had to have my street closed a few years ago, and it cost me $1,400. We gotta be bringing in thousands from that. Where, and then, these houses that are getting knocked down and rebuilt, their taxes have to be increasing. Where is all this money that our taxes are going up? Then, we get a letter that there's a mandate that New Jersey is inflation expenses. What about the other rule the New Jersey mandate has? Everyone pays taxes, not just the little guy. How many businesses are getting away without paying taxes? It's just ridiculous. Another problem I have, I thank the mayor for having 153 police officers. We need them. My problem is enforcement. My daughter had a baby and said that we have to have a car seat in order to transport her. I said, not in Linden, just come around my area, tell me if you see car seats. Children half my size, standing on the bus waving. What happens if someone has an accident? Who's responsible? Another problem I have, I have a firehouse on DeWitt and St. George. Just have an unmarked car parked in the bank there. Countless cars, I've stopped at the red light, coming around me, passing me, so they can make a right turn on red onto St. George. Somebody has to do something about these motorbikes or scooters. They have to follow the rules of the road. They're passing you right-left, going the wrong way. Someone's going to get killed. A law has to be passed in order to correct that, and a helmet's at least, too.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Comey. Okay, Virginia Malik?
Virginia Malik, Lenape Road. I preface my, I preface my comments for lack of community tolerance, cohesiveness, respect, courtesy, and accommodating others in Linden. Attitude of entitlement and me-too attitude is pervasive. Top of the list, I'll say it's a shame or a sham, the city council meeting in April, where people flooded the chamber, probably well above the legal limit, kids standing two at a time on chairs, baby carriages blocking the walkways, the audience talking over the council, the audience is talking and using their cell phones. This was a three-ring circus incited by a group of attendees. I admonish many of those in attendance for their actions and on the dais that let this happen get out of control. It takes two to tango. With this in mind, why is council not voting on Ordinances 28 and 29? From what I understand, it's zoning-related. People are saying things regarding actions are anti-Semitic. Charges are being brought up. Do people really understand what is anti-Semitic? I admonish the city council for not voting on 28 and 29, even though the zoning board approved it. This is extortion. I perceive as idle threats, and the city better get smart on what's really happening. As a president, look what happened in Lakewood, maybe a lot of people don't really... As a president, look what happened in Lakewood, maybe a lot of people don't really, old enough to know about this. Meaning of anti-Semitic is hostility towards or discrimination against Jews as a religious, ethnic, and radical racial group. How are these issues related to zoning with people wanting to build mega-houses related to this definition? And don't come back to me to say that Hasidic families have big families. This is not specific to the Jewish community, but Christians, many other ethnic people have large families, so how is anti-Semitic reasoning, it's not valid, it's a ploy and an excuse. If this continues to persist, you'll have anti-Linden resident sentiment to contend with for things that are being charged by others and actions of some residents doing things affecting other Linden residents. I'll just mention a few. Private buses for students have gotten out of hand. Yes, there are mandates by the schools, by the state, but also residents have rights, and also you have to provide safety. There's other safety issues that are going rampant, people crossing the streets, reading books, okay, not paying attention. What do we do about sidewalks where people are not even using the sidewalks, they're walking two, three, four across on the street? And they almost defy you to hit them, okay? It's a two-way proposition for citizens. I'm in the 10th Ward, one-family houses. Some people want to buy a house for investment, that's okay, but turning this into a boarding house, this is getting rampant. The city of Linden has a large temple.
Your time is up.
Okay, a large temple. What's happening to the temple? And also, I asked someone, "Why isn't your husband going to this temple?" He says, "Well, no, he goes to the temple on Morningside." That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mrs. Malik. Okay, Pat Hero?
My name is Pat Hero, I live in Linden, New Jersey. First, I want to commend Council President Yamakaitis for eliminating her former statement before the public comment section of the city council meeting. Our founders thought so highly of our rights that the First Amendment not only included freedom of speech, but more specifically, the right of the people peaceably to assemble and to petition the government for a redress of grievances. I also want to thank them for the Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Unfortunately, domestic violence is an issue where nobody is going to be standing up here and saying that they were a victim of domestic violence because it's an issue that nobody is proud of, it's hidden, it's obscured, children are witness to it, adults are witness to it, it's horrible, and I wish it didn't occur, but unfortunately, it does all too often in this country. Now, I'd like to riff a little bit on a previous statement. I personally appreciate it, what happened in April. It was one of the probably highlights of the times I've ever gone to a city council meeting. Now granted, I wish that people would have tag teamed, I wish they would have filled this room, and those who were not able, who were over capacity, would have gone outside, and when one person wanted to speak, and they finished speaking, then they went outside, tagged teamed somebody else, and had them come in. You notice what's been happening? We haven't voted on this ordinance. It's 69, 28, and 29, they just keep on postponing it. Why? It's called civic activism. Unfortunately, civic activism in our community, who's here tonight? Very few people are here tonight, but in April, people showed up, they said what they had to say. Actually, they didn't say what they had to say, they had to cancel the meeting, reschedule it for Good Friday. But you know what? They got results. Unfortunately, we don't get results because people don't show up, whether it's because people are apathetic, or they're working two jobs, or they don't understand the language, or quite frankly, they may have given up because they're too tired of politics as usual in the state of New Jersey, AKA the Sopranos State, where corruption is rampant and nepotism is a rite of passage, where most states, it's against the law. So, I'm riffing a little bit here, but the fact remains is that there are, if you want to get something done, you have to start speaking out. People say, "I'm afraid to go to the podium." I'm not a natural public speaker, quite frankly, I don't like public speaking, and I don't think I'm very good at it. It's up to you to decide whether I am or not. But you know what? When you come up and you public speak, you get attention. Don't be afraid, come to the podium, speak out. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, Dean Sumner?
Good evening. Thank you, Councilwoman Delgado and Mayor Armstead, for your remarks and for your humanity, I do really appreciate that. We spoke yesterday about this issue, but I feel compelled to continue, and for the public to know, that our police department traveled to Israel to train with military and police and very few residents actually know that this even happened. Now, this is not just an issue for Palestinians, it's obviously an issue for every single member of this community, including the police. At yesterday's caucus meeting, an officer told me that Chief Hart is sorry if what he posted was offensive. That is not an apology, that is deflection. Shame on you for treating that genocide like a PR stunt. We do not accept your performative apologies. Israel is currently committing a genocide against Palestinians. Their leaders are wanted for international, by international courts for war crimes and crimes against humanity, including starvation, displacement, and the murder of tens of thousands of children. Linden BD claimed that this trip was to learn best practices, but it did not do that. What they learned was practices rooted in occupation, militarization, racial profiling, and these have no place in a majority city that has black and brown civilians living. When the chief of police travels abroad representing his department, that's not an individual or independent visit, especially if he posts those things on an official department page, on Facebook. He represents all of us in this room and beyond, and what he learns will shape how our police treat our residents. Teachers across the nation have lost jobs for political posts, yet our police chief faces no consequences. He is not above accountability, and we deserve a real apology and full transparency. Let's be clear, when police learn to view civilians as threats, we all lose our freedom. These programs hosted by the Israeli military and intelligence units accused of human rights abuses are propagandadors, not leadership trainings. And Mayor, thank you for speaking up, but saying that the trip was planned before the 7th of October does not excuse it. Apartheid and oppression did not begin last year. They've existed for generations, we've suffered for generations. There has never been a moral time for this partnership. So I ask the council publicly, who funded this trip? What Israeli agencies were visited? What tactics were taught? And what safeguards exist today to protect our Linden residents and to protect the Linden police as well as the children? I mean, we are, I grew up in this city, and to see this happening is just an abomination. This isn't just about policy, it's about morality, values, and who we are as a community. If we would never train under South Africa, we should not train under apartheid Israel. Every time an officer learns these new tactics for domination abroad, someone here at home pays the price. Linden residents and police officers deserve better, starting with their leadership. Our police should not be learning how to control us, they should learn how to protect us and how to serve us. Chief Hart, the residents of Linden, you serve, are waiting for your public apology. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. John Kazar?
John Kazar, Linden. Wow, I think I'm sometimes a tough act to follow. Thank you. Thank you for everyone coming. Yesterday, at the city council caucus meeting, you know, I had a moment, I looked around, it was packed, it was nice to see, man, that's our city, there was just so many different people in that room, diversity, it was really great. Nice comments about School 6 PTA, I was asked last minute to jump in and for the trunk retreat and all that, it was really cool, it was really great, I loved being there for the kids, and my stomach's not liking all that candy I still have. So, let's just talk a little bit about the ordinances. This is a joke now, okay? 28, 29, it's been talked about just ad nauseam now. To be tabled to a future meeting, this is the 7th meeting, what future? What future? Does anyone know what future meeting? All right, let's be real, you're going to wait till it goes past December, and then you're going to have to effectively kill it, right? And then rewrite it, and it's already been rewritten two times. You're going to rewrite it to make it more palatable for a certain segment, and it's already been rewritten. It's just, it's such a joke, just take it off of the agenda already. Two weeks from an election, the people of Linden deserve one thing above all, a fair and honest process. In recent days, I personally witnessed what appeared to be a city employee inside a municipal building, filling out an absentee ballot request form while a city official stood nearby. I'm not here to make accusations, but that image should concern every single person who believes in free and fair elections. No one in power, not a mayor, not an elected official, not anyone drawing a paycheck from the city, should be involved in how, when, or where someone chooses to vote. That crosses a line. City Hall should never be a campaign office. Public time, public buildings, and public authority must stay out of politics, period. I'm calling on this council to send a clear message tonight. Voter intimidation, influence, or even the appearance of it has no place in Linden. Every employee and every voter must be free to make their own choice privately and without pressure. This election belongs to the people, not the powerful, let's keep it that way. Thank you.
Thank you. Can we have a motion to close the public comment portion of the meeting, please?
Council President, make a motion to close the public comments, and ask for a second, please.
Second.
Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Rivas?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Strano?
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Rodriguez?
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Mrs. Yamakaitis?
Yes. Okay, the next council meetings will be as follows. Council Conference Meeting, Monday, November 24th at 6:00 PM, in the Council Conference Room, City Hall. Council Conference Meeting prior to the council meeting, Tuesday, November 25th at 6:00 PM, in the Council Conference Room. Council Meeting, Tuesday, November 25th at 7:00 PM, in the Council Chambers. These meetings will be held in person. Can we have a motion to adjourn, please?
So move...
Second.
Orman?
Yes.
Javik?
Yes.
Caldwell?
Yes.
Delgado?
Yes.
Yes.
Armstead?
Yes.
Yes.
Hudak?
Yes.
Yes.